Well, it's seven thirty and I'm going to call the meeting of the Milton Common Council for August twenty first, twenty eighteen to order, and the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
CEO.
Here.
Wes.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
So the... Well, we all know about flooding and there's a lot of damage and it's going to be covered under different items a little bit later. And, but now this item is the comment for the citizens present, it's limited to three minutes. There's Barbara Rowe, she would like to speak.
Doesn't work that way.
Well, this is the time when the citizens can speak, so, thank you. Well, there's a microscope, you have three minutes. Identify yourself and your address.
I'm Barbara Rowe and I've lived at North High Point seventeen oh three for the last thirty-five years and watched all the street changes that have been up there and had to try to get out of my driveway for the last thirty-five years. And whenever the Middleton Brewery tries to have events, you cannot see to get out of our driveway to make a left turn and you can't see to get, make a right turn because the road curves backwards on both sides and you're at the top of the hill and you can't see the traffic coming up. I would like to have two no parking spaces in front of my house, which is not to my best interest, but would make it safer for us to get out of the joint driveway. On Sunday, I counted nine cars in the three houses that are using this joint driveway. There are two more pieces of property back there that could end up having driveway and cars using it too. So we could have as many as a dozen or more cars trying to come out of there and you have to pull into North High Point at least five feet to see around to see if somebody's coming at you from the right or from the left, so that you can go down the hill to the right. Every time I do it, I'm afraid I'm going to get hit. And I would just ask that between my mailbox and the mailbox in John Peterson's house at seventeen fifteen or seventeen oh five, whatever it is, just have two parking spaces that are no parking. And the rest of the other side of the street is all no parking also is what your proposal is.
Any...but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So the next one is Brianna Cotton.
Hello, my name is Brianna Ramsey Cotton. I'm the representative of Roundy Supermarkets Incorporated. I'm here to describe to you what we're requesting in the agenda license section. So what we're doing is we are implementing our ClickList program, which is our online ordering platform. What people do is our customers go online and they order their groceries online and then they come to the store to pick them up. What we're requesting is the expansion of our licensed premises to include those designated parking spots in the parking lot, so that when customers order their groceries online, they'll come to the store, pick them up, and we can include "I'll Call" in the order with that. So what our plan is, is when the customer comes to the store, they call the number on the sign. An associate who has picked the order is over the age of eighteen. They, the order is then staged in the ClickList room in the store. It's marked that it has "I'll Call" in it. Then when the customer comes and calls the phone number, an associate who has a, is a licensed operator and so therefore over the age of twenty-one, then brings the groceries out to the car. At that time, they check to verify that the customer is over the age of twenty-one and is able to purchase "I'll Call." They write down the birth date on the order form, load the groceries into the car, and then go back to the store and press the pay button. The important thing to note here is that payment is not taken prior to the ID being checked and prior to the customer being in the designated parking spots. As you probably know, Pick 'n Save's policy is we ID everyone. No matter the age, you can be twenty-one or you can be eighty, we request that to see your ID. And so that is also the case here, as well as all policies that Roundy's has inside the store apply to this transaction as well. So, for instance, if a straw buying situation is suspected, as it might be in the store, we would then check all of the IDs of everyone in the car, same as in the store. Also, if the customer is not the driver of the vehicle, we also check the ID of the driver of the vehicle to verify they are over the age of twenty-one as well. So, at this time, we've been approved to do this service in about forty municipalities. In the Madison area, we have been approved in Madison, Fitchburg, Manona, as well as Sun Prairie. So we're really looking to implement this, our full ClickList program, into our Middleton store and really invest in it that way. So, thank you, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions this time? Okay, it's okay. The next speaker is Rob Conheim.
I'm Rob Conheim, seven five oh one Voss Parkway. I'm here as the chairman of the Arts Committee. A few months ago, we lost a valued member of our committee. He was removed and replaced and we would like to get him back. His name is Chris Laurent. He's a real estate developer here in Middleton and he has incorporated public art into some of his developments. And because of the connection with other real estate developers here in town, we think it's important to keep him on the Arts Committee, try and advocate for art with other developers, and also to inform them of developments, the projects going on within the Arts Committee. The only way we can get him back is to increase the size of the Arts Committee by one, and that's the proposal on your agenda tonight near the end of the agenda. So I'd like you to approve that if you're willing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. So the next one is Kirsten Klockner.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Klockner and I live on thirty-four fourteen Valley Ridge Road. Many of the elders do know me because I've spoken with them multiple times on bike and pedestrian safety issues. And that is what I'm speaking on tonight as well regarding High Point Road and the fact that you are revisiting the possibility of bike lanes continuing north on Green, from Greenway up into downtown Middleton. Currently, it is south of Greenway. And what I request is the continuation of bike lanes for multiple reasons. The main reasons being that we have so many missing links already here in Middleton that this would help prevent another missing link, that traffic will only continue to increase on that side of town, making it less safe for cyclists and pedestrians. And that many of you do not know that I do teach bike safety classes, teaching adults and children how to ride safely in the roads. And one of the biggest things that we teach is to be predictable. It's the first thing that I go over with both children and adults. When you are going from a bike lane to a road that the bike lane stops, it is extremely hard to be a predictable cyclist and a predictable driver. Cyclists tend to change their line of movement when they go from a bike lane to a non-bike lane area. They tend to weave in and out of parked cars, not knowing how to ride safely. And that makes it very dangerous for them, but it also makes it dangerous for drivers because they don't know what that cyclist is going to do, especially if it's a younger or newer cyclist. Although I know George Zens does not like bike lanes and does not feel they keep them, keep people safe, I would disagree because people follow lines and they like to stay within lines. No, it's not going to prevent a massive car from striking you. It's not this magical barrier. However, it's a visual. And when I'm biking with my boyfriend's ten and thirteen-year-old and teaching them how to ride, I teach them to stay in the lines, all right? And then, just like on Airport Road in the town of Middleton, people, drivers do follow lines. They follow the fog line and the fog line was going pretty much off the road for quite some time until I had it blacked out. Drivers do also follow lines. So, I request that you continue the bike lanes in, on the northern side, leading into downtown Middleton to make it safer for families and everybody to bike to and from Madison to Middleton for work, recreation, what have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Next one is Susan West.
Okay. As a result of the recent storms, I've been thinking about our Stormwater Utility Board and our fees. And I would like the city to at least reconsider the possibility of raising the fee. And I've asked the attorney to find out, do we need to go to referendum to do this? But if we do need to go to referendum and it's something that we decide to do, I think this is the right time after citizenry has seen the negative impact of severe flooding.
Thank you, Susan.
So I would like us to consider that. Do we need to make a motion?
I think what you're trying to do is make a specific referral to some committee.
Yeah, and I'm...
Whichever one that might be.
Stormwater Utility Board?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would make a motion to refer it to the Stormwater Utility Board?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of this motion to refer this to Utility Board say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, so. So, anybody else who wants to speak?
I just wanted to point out, I left three people that have said that they are not in support of removing the parking on High Point. We've got Scott Weiner, the president of the Capital Brewery, Rob Sivitovich, who is president of the Association at the Glensville Lofts.
Okay. So there are three people who are along with you, you are opposed to as well? Okay, who are opposed to the removing the parking along the High Point Road. Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, so I'm going to close that part of the meeting and we move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
We will approve of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Now on to the updates. Mike, or who is going to do it? Mike and Chuck?
Well, today was a devastating day of loss for Middleton, but we responded well. Our police, fire, EMS, Public Works, Public Lands, and our public relations crew all really did a great deal of work today to get the message out and to respond, to rescue people in dire circumstances and without a loss of life in Middleton today. And I'm very encouraged by how we came together as a community. The good neighbor city was well represented by our first responders today. And my thanks to them. With the, the day of loss... With this day of loss, the chief and I, Chief Folk and I, went around the community and I took some pictures and I wanted to relay that devastation to you. Some of you saw it firsthand in your own travels. This picture in particular is showing a great deal of slough off of the storm channel, Pheasant Branch Creek, which is just east of Park Street. And this is the creek, just showing how the creek has become a river overnight. And then another picture of that slough through the trees. This is behind Cromery Middle School. And it was the first thing I wanted to take a look at with the chief because there was a huge investment the community made in Cromery. And from my non-engineer review of it, the toe of the slope was in good shape, but the water came up, as you can see. I don't know if this means that bridge need, will need to be replaced or not, but that is the bridge that, that linked Cromery to the Conservancy Trail. And it was inundated with water, as you can see. These are the steps leading up to Cromery. So the, the toe of the slope was in good shape, but you see some erosion of the pathway by the steps leading up to Cromery. And this is just a view from Cromery itself down to the creek. And here you get to see what I believe is a street. This is, this is actually Nursery Drive looking to the south from Airport Road. And there were cars stranded throughout the community and many rescues made by our first responders. This is again showing that from a different angle on Nursery Drive.
You in a boat?
No, Chuck and I were on pavement, looking out at that site. This is our airport on the far east side. This is the, I believe, the mechanism by which we have flight gauging. Is Mark opens here? Is that right? Flight navigation, thank you. So the waters did not overtake that from our visual from the road, but you can see that we had a great deal of flooding on the east side of the airport. And this shows it more from, from Airport Road. So that's the east side of the larger hangars at the airport east side. And this is the trail under the bridge that connects Penny Klein Park with Firefighters Park on the northwest side. And that trail was completely inundated and it looks like chunks were, were disposed in, in this event. This is another angle of that under the bridge. And this is the Costco parking lot. This is after the water had receded a great deal. You might have heard that there were fifty people stranded at Costco overnight. By the time we arrived there, they had all been able to leave the premises. So, many of them were employees, of course, but they were, they were stranded there overnight. And there was a great deal of work pumping water out of Costco as we went by. And this is another view of, of Costco, I believe. Towards Gilda's, right. And we were, we were taking this tour around, what, eleven-thirty noon? Yeah. And this is looking towards Costco from Demming Way.
The other way around.
Yeah, you were, you were standing in Costco's entryway?
From Costco, thank you. This is, I believe, Demming Way, looking towards Spectrum and Meaden Hunt. The waters had actually receded some by that, that time. I think Demming Way is now open, right Chuck?
No. Not all of it.
Not all of it?
I just got trapped.
Oh, okay.
Are employees in those buildings?
At Spectrum, right? Hotels, Fairfield Inn had employee, or visitors, that they, I believe, extricated the visitors from their hotel on their own. That's another view of Demming Way. And then there's the one I was thinking for Costco, that's from, from Demming Way, looking toward Costco. And another angle from Demming Way. And this is Demming Way near the junction with Highway fourteen. And as you can see, much of the trail has been lifted and removed by the force of the waters. So if you didn't hear Chuck, that will be closed for some time. Then looking toward Monks, again, this is that same chunk of trailway. Then moving to Highway fourteen, this is a tree that was down along the highway. We didn't see a lot of tree and brush, which was a bit surprising given the severity of the storm. And perhaps some of you did, but we did not see a lot of that. This is the railroad bridge that is completely undermined at Highway fourteen and what we call South Pond. That's the pond that is adjacent to the Co-op and ProBuild, or, yeah, ProBuild and across from Market West Apartments. There's a chunk of Highway fourteen that's missing, which is in the eastbound lanes of fourteen. There's a better view of the rail bridge and how it's been wiped out. Market West Apartments in the background. And there's another view of that. I, I think it'll be a while before the railroad gets that fixed.
The sign was okay?
The sign was, the sign was standing, yes. Howard sign. There's another view of Highway fourteen.
Highway fourteen, is it state responsibility or is it...
Yes, yeah. Highway fourteen's a state responsibility. No, I'm just showing you the overall extent. This is also along Highway fourteen. And then we move to Market Street. This is the path under the bridge that I walk every day and I'll have to take a different route, but it's, it's pretty much washed out here. And it's, it's not unusual for that, for the water to overtop that particular path when we have big storms, but this has not happened in this location before. And this is South Pond, looking from Market Street. And the, the waters have already receded at that point. Yes, that's Esser Pond, thank you. So this, Esser Pond overtook Demming Way and over to Esser Place. And it has created quite a bit of problems for, in that area, for a lift station as well. That's one of the major things that we've noticed that will need to be fixed, is that lift station or possibly replaced. And this is moving to our lake access off of Lake Street. You can see how our, our own access has been overtaken by the waters on Lake Mendota. There's a boat that had capsized and they were trying to lift it out of the water. And this is at Captain Bill's, I believe, the water lapping up through the fence there. Then the Creek Corridor. It was amazing to see the rapid water coming toward Lake Mendota, and this is off of Dewey Court. And it was just going about as rapid as you'd ever want to see the water going. And this is the other side of the road there, I believe, at Dewey Court. Creek Corridor, this is, I believe, off of Century Avenue, where the, the bridge near the Future Trail had property. And mayor told me that the, the creek in that location actually took a different course through the Conservancy and...
Mark and I, we both saw that and it's just...
It's north of the Conserv, north of Century, it took a hard right instead of going straight.
Yep. And it's all fallen tree there, so you couldn't go any further there, so.
And then this is at Tiedemann Pond. So the, the water has overtaken the park at, at Tiedemann.
So just, if you want to go back to that, Mike, that picture? So that observation area that you see, the, the fence, that's an observation deck?
Observation deck, yeah.
That's floating because it actually is, was anchored to the left of, of where that picture was taken.
Yeah, so we lived there and I have never seen this place flooded quite as much as it is now. We had that flood in year two thousand, but nothing quite like this, so.
And there's where the, the park is overtaken by water. That also happened in two thousand, it might have happened in two thousand eight as well. Both of those were considered hundred-year events. The, a consultant of ours, who's done some work for Public Lands in particular, told Mark Wagner that he modeled this and believes that it's a thousand to fifteen-hundred-year event by that modeling. You know, we can all question whether hundred-year is really a hundred-year anymore since it seems like we've had four of these in the last twenty-five years. Canoe out in the park on Tiedemann Pond. And then I think Drew Montour took a couple of videos to show you as well. That's Parmenter at, at the Creek Corridor. And this is what we've fondly called Lake Folk outside of the, the chief's window. And it was completely blown out and into the creek at that location by the police department. So, that's the, some of the visuals. I, I know Joanna, you and Paul were out and about the community and you observed quite a bit of this too. Perhaps many of you did. And it, it is quite devastating, but I think we're a resilient community and we must rebuild.
Mike, do you have any information on the bridge on Century Avenue near Common Ground?
There, there was a lane closed to, by the county, obviously, to do some maintenance work, I believe, there and maybe to investigate it further.
Yeah, maintenance associated with the flooding.
No, there's a little hole there on the...
Because the, because the lane wasn't closed until this morning.
Sean, you want to address that issue?
Matt Rice, one of the county's highway engineers, took a look at that this afternoon and sent me his preliminary assessment, that he thinks that structure is sound, that the north sidewalk needs to remain closed. It's undermined, but he thinks that the north lane itself, the westbound outside lane, is structurally sufficient for traffic loading. I did notice that it's closed right now, so I do want to follow up with Matt as to whether he would advocate for reopening that outside westbound lane or advocate for leaving it closed until the scour can be filled. But, but the little sinkhole that was under the sidewalk is, is much enlarged today.
I was concerned about the road.
And actually, some citizens had complained about it in the past and I brought to the attention of, of our staff and then the other staff had asked the county to do it. That was almost three weeks ago. And finally, county is going to get to it, so.
Right, so he, he thinks that is safe for traffic.
Keith, you want to add anything? Mike, you have anything more?
Well, we had several meetings with Dane County Emergency Management today, and some of the more significant issues were ours. But there were also evacuations from smaller communities west of us. And so our hopes and prayers are with those folks as they, they try to deal with all of this devastation as well. Pardon me? Oh, we did have a fuel spill at the airport as well. And it is a broomed-in area at the airport. One of the two tanks in that location leaked fuel, and my understanding, it was contained by that berm. That's why it's there. So Bill has put together today this summary that you had before you of our insurance coverage, property insurance, potential for FEMA, public assistance grants. That, of course, requires approval by the federal government, which requires, in turn, I believe, approval by the state for an emergency declaration. So we're hoping to see that state emergency declaration forthcoming in the next day or two, and perhaps after that, the federal government. But Bill has outlined a lot of things here that are helpful to discussion of how we move forward. And then we have, within a very quick period of time, come up with some estimates. Some of these are more guesstimates than others, because in many cases, the trails were completely underwater. So hard for us to determine exactly how much they might cost to be replaced or fixed. But we've done our best, under the timeline given to us by Dane County Emergency Management. They want this in tomorrow morning, so they did extend the deadline slightly. But as you can see, we're heading towards seven million dollars in damage from this estimate. And that includes also our, our time through, for the police department, it was through three PM today. So if we have additional rains and a different, additional call-outs, then we will have to modify this as we move forward. If you do have questions about the financial aspects of it, I think I would defer to Bill on that, and talking through the fund balance and our contingency fund balance and, as well. In talking with Larry prior to the meeting, if the council takes action with the resolution that you have on the agenda this evening, allowing us to get started, and Public Works Committee, in turn, approves a resolution on Monday evening, then we could go ahead, without bidding, we can still get estimates from different contractors, and hopefully get some of this work done yet this fall before winter sets in. So that's, I know, my hope, and I believe our Public Works, Public Lands staff as well, that we can get a jumpstart on this activity and put some things back in place, particularly where there are life safety and health issues, where trails are completely missing, where roads are missing, or chunks of roads are missing, and to get things going. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that, Sean or Matt? Oh, yes, the, and the mayor did sign the, the local disaster resolution this morning. Anything else you want to add, Matt?
The governor did declare an emergency, too?
He did?
Yeah.
I, I just want to follow up on something Mike said in regards to a lot of our trail system being underwater. Those are worst-case numbers, where if we have to replace the entire trail or the entire board. It's likely to come down from that number, but at ten-thirty this morning, that was our, our best guess, and we're working to refine those numbers, and we'll probably have updated and different numbers tomorrow.
Matt, is there anything in here to cover? I mean, we've spent a lot of money on stabilizing that creek corridor string bank.
I believe, I didn't bring the sheet up with me, there is a column...
Yeah, there are three hundred and fifty thousand.
There's a column under Public Works and Utilities, Pheasant Branch Downstream, Park Street, Pheasant Branch Donna Drive Basin. I believe those are rough numbers obtained from Aaron Steber this morning. Gary Huth was able to connect with Aaron and get those numbers for the streambank work.
I'm concerned also about what was done last year.
It does not, it does not include that. We actually, Mark Wagner and myself discovered that erosion and, and the streambank failing there this afternoon, probably around four o'clock. So that'll be, have to be worked back into our numbers. And actually, I, I believe it's a lot more significant than even what was replaced last year. It seems much further upstream than the work area that was, was done last year.
And even on the creek, it says downstream of Park Street. Is that going east or northeast?
I have to clarify with Gary and Aaron, again, I, this is an exercise, it's not an exact science, just because there's a lot of moving pieces.
Basically, see, that entire corridor will need to be replaced.
Correct.
And continuing on with that, if you go into the conservancy itself, Matt, has anybody assessed any damage inside the conservancy, where we don't have trails, or, or, you know, what that looks like from a...
A lot of it's impossible to reach, or was during the day-to-day, so it's, it's things that as water recedes, we're going to get more information. And, you know, today, I know a lot of the Public Works crew was out just trying to get barricades placed and assess damage, and, and we were trying to close trails. It was amazing that people were still out running. I watched a woman decide whether to go down the creek corridor this morning or not, and thankfully, she chose not to. But we're also concerned, and as long as there's an audience to this, we really ask that people avoid caution tape. If, if caution tape's up, it's up for a reason, we're not, we know people are curious and want to see, but for everyone's safety, there's a reason that it's there, and just ask that people are, are careful and mindful, because rushing water and unknown conditions don't make a great, great environment for recreation.
Following on with that, so generally speaking, all of, the entire conservancy trail network from beyond the Confluence Pond all the way to Lake Mendota should be considered closed?
We've, we've put out that our conservancy lands areas and trail system within conservancy lands is closed. There are other areas that are cordoned off, obviously, and, you know, I, I don't think anyone's using the trail system in front of Costco today. That one's out in the street, so, but, you know, it's, it's using common sense and being careful. We know people still want to stay to their daily routines, but that those are going to be, have to be adjusted in, in terms of how people are recreating for the near future.
Thank you, Matt. Keith?
Just to go over quickly, road closures, you know, are probably major, East-West Road, Highway fourteen, University Avenue, is going to be closed, and it's going to be closed for some time. We may at some point be able to split up the, the westbound lane to do an east and westbound lane. But as you saw in those pictures that Mike took, the eastbound lanes are severely compromised. I don't know when that's going to be available for people to use. Then also, our north-south road, our detour, since Gammon slash Park Street is closed, we can't go to the west now. Long Meadow and Madison, which goes into Westfield and Middleton, is closed, and, and we can get through Stonefield. But we just have no idea how quickly or slowly the water is going to recede to open up these roads. Murphy's going to be closed for quite some time, right at University Avenue, Highway fourteen. So I would echo what Matt said, we had to spend a lot of time today with police officers at barricades, being static at those locations instead of doing what they should have been doing, because people were literally getting out of their cars and moving the barricades. So I know I'm, nobody in this audience would do that, but, you know, we're really asking people, if there's a barricade there, please follow those rules, not suggestions, don't go through them. And, and we just don't have an estimate when we're going to be able to open these roads up again, because the ground is so saturated that it's draining very slowly, and we're getting a lot of stuff from the west also. As we heard, Mezzo, Black Earth, were hit even harder probably than we were, and that stuff's going to drain this way. So patience, thanks.
Yeah, I would like to commend Keith, Mike Davis, Matt, Sean, and all our staff responding to this calamity here. And all the city employees who have responded to this one, including EMS, Fire Department, or Milton Fire Company. So they have done a phenomenal job, it was really a huge disaster, and it has been really handled well. We have a long ways to go, but we have made a great start. I noticed on some of these streets, our staff had already started the cleanup process, which is really nice. So everybody ought to be commended, and let's give them all a big hand. So we can go to the item number three under resolution. This is authorizing the use of contingency funds for emergency response and recovery.
I think agreements?
Pardon me? It's item number three under resolutions.
Oh, okay.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-eighteen forty-one.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Question for Bill, a couple of questions, actually. For the accounting purposes, you probably are going to have to put into play for this process, we're going to be keeping track of all of our expenditures by how, by department, by total city. We're going to, I assume, I assume that you're going to create accounting mechanisms so that we can find out the actual cost this is going to be sooner or later. And this, typically, these kinds of things, if you watch where it happens, it's happened around the state occasion, not very frequent. But when it does, it's a long-term recovery process. It doesn't, the, the, the kickback that you get from the feds and the, and the state don't happen overnight. We're going to have to probably have a mechanism in place where we can fund a lot of this repair over the next three, six months to a year, before we start seeing any funds that come back to us. So I just want to make sure that, that we nail down all of our costs and all of our expenditures and all of our recovery monies in this process.
Yeah, we will be keeping detailed records on all of the expenditures. We'll need that in order to apply for state and federal assistance. So we'll be working with the departments and already working on tracking overtime hours and equipment usage, and as we get into other responses. So we will continue to do that tracking. This resolution, I think, is just the first step to authorize some initial actions for things that needed immediate response. There will certainly be additional discussions of potential funding sources in some of these projects. We don't know the full scope of them, but they're very large projects, and there certainly is the issue of staging and what we're going to be able to fund upfront, and when we may get reimbursement. But to answer your question, yes, we'll be keeping detailed records and accounting of that, and be able to do regular updates for the council.
This resolution is for such a small sum of money, that, that's probably for the gas for the fire department for the last two days. I just, you know, these things just swell in proportion, and I just want everybody to be aware of the fact that, get ready, get your feet down on the ground, because this is what's going to happen to you over the next six months to a year. We're going to be paying for this, one way or another, for a long term to come.
Yes, Emily.
I, I wanted to say thank you to the city staff. Our, my district decided to request sand for sandbags, and they delivered sand, I think, within the hour. I can see the value of the contingency funds request, because not only did it arrive magically and wonderfully quickly, but the labor brought it over. I can tell you, within minutes, people were sandbagging, so thank you, I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else wants to say anything? Okay, so the motion is to authorize the use of contingency funds for emergency response and recovery. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now on to the agreements. Item number one, provides proposal with TRC Environmental Consultants for Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, dated February twenty-six, twenty eighteen, for the Clark Street properties.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or any discussion? Okay, then all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. So the next, the agreement with Whispering Pines Condom Minimum LLC for tax incremental district three assistance.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Ask, as modified and amended with some numbers. And some dates.
Yes.
At Finance.
Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. On to the resolutions, Resolution number one. Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash forty, accepting easement for emergency access for Whispering Pines.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the, accepting the easement for emergency access for Whispering Pines, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two under resolutions, twenty-eighteen dash thirty-nine, adding wards due to an accession of lands.
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Do you know what's happening, there's no population there, it's just the land right now, so. Is that right, so? So if there are no questions, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to the Ward of Bid, Court and Professional Services, item number one. Proposal for architectural services from Hartford Norby for Pleasant View Golf Course, related to an impact study for the extension of Pleasant View Road.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions? This guy was the, the same person who did the work with the Pleasant for this golf course in the past as well, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The second one is the Ward of Bid for Concrete Repair Project to J.B. Johnson Brothers.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Seven months, so. So the third is the, under Ward of Bid, so Ward of Bid to Lawn Care Plus for stump grinding.
Move approval is recommended by, by PRC.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There are a lot of stumps to be ground there, so all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to licenses, application to amend the Class A license premise description by Roundy's Supermarkets doing business as Pick and Save sixteen-hundred Century Avenue, to include the designated clickless parking stalls.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, any questions, any discussions? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so there's, there's seven and one abstentions, so. On to miscellaneous. Pointment of Tammy Erickson to the Positional Senior Services Director.
I'll move approval is recommended by Personnel.
Second.
This is a great choice, and, yes, Mike?
I just wanted to thank Melissa for the very thorough job she did in the selection process, as she's done so capably among many this year. And Tammy Erickson is an excellent choice, I think she's a great successor to Jill. She has a vision, and she has common sense and good pragmatic ideas. So I think you'll enjoy meeting her and working with her, hopefully, over the next several years.
Yeah, I agree with Mike, Melissa did a really outstanding job. This was the first time I actually worked with her on this selection process. She was great.
Cool.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, and Tammy Erickson will be our Senior Services Director. The ordinances, first reading, final action, may be taken upon approval of the, approval of motion to suspend rules under Section one point zero seven, Milton General ordinances. Number one, ordinance to mend parking restrictions on North High Point Road, but in Greenway... but in Greenway Boulevard and Terrace Avenue.
I'd like to make this motion. I feel strongly in the businesses in the area that this is not the right time to be removing parking from the downtown area. We have made, the developers spent tens of thousands of dollars on parking studies. They've had to invest a lot of money to meet what the parking studies have said and to just arbitrarily remove these spots. I don't think it's, it's a good time for that. And right now, the, before Phase Three of the Middleton Center is completed, we don't know exactly what's, what's gonna happen. There, the brewery is already using some of the parking that's there, so I'm thinking that it's gotta go somewhere. And with the plaza, we're trying to get the downtown moving, not take parking spots away. I would like to see this motion at least deferred until after we know more about the downtown.
I'll second that, speak to the motion, Mr. Year.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I'm on the opposite side of that debate, but I want, I do think that additional information about the Phase Three would be helpful. I believe we do need bike lanes there, but I, I do want to have all the information before we make that final decision.
So any other questions?
I mean, I've got concerns about how long is it going to take to get this information? Because this is a public safety issue. And I'm in favor of removing the bike lanes, but how, if we defer, how long is this going to get drug out?
I'm sure Sean can add to this if I'm missing anything. This actually is not an arbitrary time to be discussing this because we just rebuilt High Point Road and it doesn't have any lane markings on it. So that is why this matters before you tonight, it is not a randomly selected time. So I don't know how else to answer the question other than we need to get, ideally, we would get pavement markings on the street before winter. I don't know if we can get by without any pavement markings, how Sean, how the city engineer feels about that, I defer to him on that.
So there's a, Mark, do you want to, well, okay, Sean, go ahead, and if you want to address that one, but there's a, there's a proposal where there's a three different suggestions made, so you had a chance to read those?
I haven't seen any, which proposal are you referring to?
Kathy, you had.
Well, the Bike Ped had a, what they wanted to have approved, then what Public Works had approved other things before that, now they approved it and this, you know, it could stay the way it is with sharrows and educate the population, the bike population, the drivers about this. The reason I, I feel about this section of road is because when you come off that, you're going to end up on Elmwood, which doesn't have bike lanes. It would probably have sharrows when we're, when we're done. And this would be a great place to start with the markings to get people familiar with this. And you, your memo said that the cars are a little fast there, parking helps calm traffic.
Okay, Sean.
I, I originally rose just to speak to the issue of timing of, of pavement markings and my preference would be to put a center line in if nothing else, but the location of that center line depends on what else we're doing with the road. So if the decision is to defer the decision on bike lanes slash sharrows slash parking, then I would advocate not putting a, a center line in at this time 'cause relocating it is, is something difficult.
That's not answering my question. I wanna know if we defer, how long will it take to get the information needed to make the decision?
Okay, so who would have that information?
I don't think that's something that you can just, you know, who knows how long that's gonna take. But I, this is, if you look at the dates, the previous dates that this was brought up.
It's been a long time already.
Yeah, it's been April and May, but my argument was if it hasn't been brought before us in this long, if we take another couple of weeks. I mean, we felt it was appropriate to wait from April to bring it to the, the middle of August.
I'm not sure why it took so long to get it because Bike Ped met, that was months ago.
I, I think some recommendations changed back and forth as it was going to committees, but also.
It turned back to Bike Ped and Public Works. And then this is the first it's been brought back, and that was several months ago.
I think there was a request for some information about how many people were actually using the road for parking, but while it was being constructed, wasn't inopportune time for that.
That's, you're correct, that's what delayed it.
So from what I remember, the Public Works first had voted to leave the parking and then it went back there and they voted to remove the parking and I don't know what the Bike and Ped did, so.
I think that's correct.
They're on the same page now.
No, they're not, Bike Ped suggested.
Right, the Ped Bike Transit, I'm sorry, Alder.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let Kathy finish it, please.
Well, yeah, I'm.
Oh, okay.
The Ped Bike Transit Committee adopted a unique, an attempt at a hybrid approach. I did talk with Sean about this afterwards and after we discussed it further, I think we both had the opinion that that was not workable. The Public Works Committee had adopted the position of endorsing, their, their most recent position was to endorse the removal of parking on the west side and establish the bike lanes as is recommended in my memo. After this, this conflict, this conflict between the two committees, Alder West requested some data, on-street parking data. And so I had to wait until the end of June when the street was finally open to do that, to do those counts. And as you know, I had some other things going on this summer, so I couldn't do the counts as frequently, as often, as early as I wanted to. So I did those counts, they are in the memo. I think I counted on eight or nine days. I also counted last Friday because I hadn't really done a good job of counting on a Friday night when Capital Brewery's Beer Garden is open. They had a, what I consider to be a popular band there last Friday. They had four, I'm sorry, three cars in the southbound lane. I think it was five or six northbound, you have the sheet in front of you and I left it at my place. But what I found really interesting was that the V, it's fine, that's fine, thank you. What I found really interesting and surprising was only four cars were parked in the VA lot. But if you look at the photos I gave you, all of Terrace Avenue was basically parked full all the way to Parmiter Street, as Alder Olson said that people do spill down that street. What I don't understand, we, we talk about education for motorists and bicyclists. The distance to walk to the end of Terrace Avenue at Parmiter Street is actually longer than parking at the VA lot. Capital Brewery did not have their sign displayed advising people to go to the VA lot and there was plenty of parking. So based on the fact that there's the hill and safety is an issue, we don't have a sidewalk on the west side of High Point Road, I felt very comfortable recommending what the Public Works Committee recommended in April, which is the, it's in your memo tonight.
Yeah, Mike, or Mark, I, I know that this is your preferred.
Yeah.
Solution. Perhaps the Bike Ped would like to take another stab at coming up with another solution since the, the first one they came up with, I mean, this just showed up, I was kinda surprised that it didn't, you know, we didn't talk more about it.
The reason it didn't go back to the committees is because the committees both took action and they differed, and they had difference of opinion. So since the council had referred it to them, the committees had reported out but had a mixed opinion, I thought it was only appropriate to bring it back to the council for direction. If you wish to re-refer it, obviously we'd be happy to work and get you whatever information you need.
Is that part of your motion?
Well, I, I think that would work, it would give more time to, a timeframe to it. Yeah.
Okay. All right, Emily, you had a question or discussion?
He answered it, I went to know how many people were parking on it and I parked over there with my kids and I remember only three or four at a time, so, thank you for confirming.
Little Red also is not in favor of removing the parking, Hodie Bar, there's other businesses in the area as well. I don't know how you can, unless you polled the people that were parked at the VA, I don't know how you can be sure that they weren't, they weren't there for another reason.
I think it's okay to have more discussion, so any other questions or comments?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
I've got concerns, my concerns are publics.
Just a minute, let Joanna speak, so.
No.
Okay, all right, Susan.
My concerns are public safety and we're going to remove the parking on the west side. It's an area of the street, there is no sidewalk. But what we're doing is asking people to get out of their car, walk across the street, which is on a hill where there's impaired sightlines. It's not just for bicycles, this is a safety issue for even the people parking there. I think we need to do better education of all our citizens that there is available parking with, you know, as Mark says, it's closer to park in the VA parking lot to the brewery than at the end of Terrace Avenue. We need to make, advertise where our parking is. I know there are lots of people that don't know there's public parking under T-Wall's building. But this is really a public safety issue and I would hate for us to have a bike accident and, because bike accidents are not trivial. It's not like a bump, you know, of having your fender damaged. It easily results in bodily injury, if not death. So I strongly feel we should go ahead and approve this and get the lines down and move forward that way.
I think there's probably a lot of places that have safety issues. My hope is that they would put a lot of markings showing people that this is sharrows, slow down, we got bikes, we got people, everybody's using the road and slow down.
We also need to get more.
Because when they get down to Elmwood, they're not gonna have the, the bike lanes down there, so.
We also on this need to get lighting because that is not a well-lit street. And I'm talking about also pedestrian safety going across that street.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments? So the motion is to defer and, yes.
Um, I guess I would just like to state that I agree with Susan, I think this is a safety issue. I honestly don't see what, what information we will really gather in the next two weeks, four weeks. I feel like I've heard the opinions of, of multiple groups on this. I, I don't see that people's opinions will change. Maybe a solution will come out that will be amazing and will solve all, all people's concerns, but I'm, I'm a bicyclist, I'm a driver of cars and I'm a, somebody who attends Capital Brewery 'cause it's just about in my backyard. And I see all of those things and I personally feel like losing a few parking spots and having a dedicated bike lane is the right thing for this area. It's the safe, it's a safety factor and I think that's necessary and I personally am going to be voting against, I guess, delaying this decision.
I think the Capital Brewery, they have started the education process and we probably should pursue even more of it. And I know we used to have parking there for all along, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, so. So, so I think it's, having more discussion, I'm, I don't have any problems. So all those in favor of the motion to defer say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So motion passes five to three. So this will be deferred and it will go to the Bike and Ped Committee for further discussion and then come back at some time, so.
Okay, this is a deferral.
This is a deferral, yes.
And deferral should defer.
But it included that it will be sent to the Bike and Ped Committee, so.
Howard's finished speaking.
Oh, sorry.
Burrow will automatically show up on our next meeting. Right?
Right, it will.
Okay, all right.
So that you've got from now until school starts to figure this out.
Okay.
Thank you, Howard.
So the next one is the ordinance to create an exemption to prohibitions on keeping of domesticated animals for special events.
I didn't think I was. I do have two chills.
This is from Ellen O.
Yes, I know, it's from Ellen O. And did we actually ask, approve the ordinance? We certainly discussed it and wanted to be sure there was plenty of, we gave lots of instructions to Robin.
Right.
Ready?
Let's defer this.
I think this needs to be deferred.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, for this because we also asked Matt a few questions.
Yes.
So I'm gonna make the motion that we defer this.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or, all those in favor of the motion to defer say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are now to ordinances, this is second reading, so whatever we have, it becomes final. Ordinance detaching lands from the city of Milton to the town of Springfield.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? It's a small patch. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Planning zonings, specific implementation plan approval, dressed are mixed-use development including Milton Market.
Move approval, recommended by Plan Commission.
Need a second.
I will second so that we can have the conversation.
All right, so any questions?
They've made some changes, is that correct?
They made some, uh, small changes in, um, some of their, uh, elevations have changed. They addressed all the staff comments and so at Plan Commission, we were, um, we were happy with the, the work they had done to, to address all the staff concerns, so we recommended it be approved.
They actually made lots of changes from what it was, so it's, Abby, here, you want to address, Abby?
I have a question.
Sure, just let, let Abby.
Well, I wanna be sure Abby addresses it.
Okay, go ahead, ju- just a minute, let Susan ask her question, so.
Considering the rains, and that is an area with a very high water table, are there stormwater facilities adequate?
They have seven ponds there, so, yeah, go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, they, they do, they have seven wet ponds and their stormwater management plan has not yet received full approval. But I know Gary Huth has been working with Wade Wiser on getting the, the.
One of the problems is the city's storm drains are not of an adequate size.
Well, well, see, that's a, that's gonna be a whole nother issue that we're gonna have to deal with, but I deeply wanna go into this, but we knew that was the case when Jacob Klein put in his two projects and we didn't do anything about it then.
I know.
So.
But this is going to be an even bigger project.
So let Abby talk and then let Sean answer that question, so.
So there have been several modifications to the development. Many are related to the architecture and the materials of the development. The biggest change in my mind is that they have modified their stormwater plan, which now allows, they're, they're basically bathtubbing the site, which allows the building to be sunk down, which means that we are not gonna have a six-foot-tall retaining wall along Lisa Lane, the north side of Lisa Lane, which I think we, we had a lot of concerns about as far as how successful those service retailers could be there with, you know, that level of elevation above the sidewalk grade and relying on steps up to the facility. The recommendation coming out of Plan Commission was for approval contingent on resolution of planning staff recommendations, engineering staff recommendations, and approval of the stormwater management plan. The TIA is completed, we didn't include it in your packet 'cause it's about six hundred pages, but Public Works Committee has approved it and they've determined that there are not any upgrades to facilities that are necessary due specifically to this development. There are some areas that need improvement, traffic improvements, but they're not specific or caused by this development. So to go over the planning staff recommendations, there were some changes that were recommended by our staff and that the developer has agreed to comply with. The first one being that one of the materials that's being used on the property is a vinyl shake material and we made the recommendation that that not extend all the way down to the ground level at any elevation. There was a, a recommendation regarding a mural that's being proposed and it requiring design review at a future date. The lighting plan that was submitted by the developer did not extend beyond the property lines, so we still need, excuse me, an updated photometric plan, which they, they've agreed that they will meet the requirements and they'll provide that. We need updated elevation drawings showing the, the retaining wall is being sunk down significantly. And there were some site features that are being proposed by the applicant that our staff is very supportive of and I know our mayor is very supportive of, including a children's play area or structure, dog park, fire pits, grills, basketball hoop, et cetera, that were not shown on the site plan. So our staff felt that, you know, if, as long as the developer was agreeing to approve all of these, from a zoning perspective, these are things that can be taken care of with contingencies and we are recommending approval of the rezoning to S.I.P. The S.I.P. is. Um, the SIP is reasonably consistent with the GIP. Um, that being said, the stormwater management plan, while I know Gary and Wade have done a lot of work on it and my understanding, the last time I spoke with Gary, is that they're pretty close. Um, it, it still needs to receive the final approval before the, the rezoning would, um, take effect, that would be a contingency. The engineering staff recommendations are all technical in nature, there were no policy issues, um, from that engineering plan review.
So if Water Resources was not happy with the stormwater, this would not go into effect?
Um, right, the, the approval of the stormwater management plan would be a contingency of the SIP rezoning.
Yeah, you're right, Susan, yes. Any other questions for Abby? Oh, yes, Howard.
Um, having sat on the Plan Commission way back in the dark ages and watching what happens on the Plan Commissions, I'm always amazed at the fact that the amount of effort that goes into Plan Commission work, um, is oftentimes put aside and ignored by simply saying, well, um, it doesn't, doesn't, all the things that we talked about, uh, that need to be done, we'll just go ahead and approve something, um, contingent upon somebody figuring it out. I, I'm personally, I find that objectionable, because these are our responsibilities and our staff's responsibilities to work out all the elements of whatever approval it is that we have to do. And in the case of Plan Commission, if it happens to be stormwater, we shouldn't be approving this project until that stormwater agreement is in writing and done. And anything else that is hanging over our heads on these kind of projects needs to be done. It's the only lever we have left over a development when we approve them. If we go ahead and prove and say, yep, turp, somebody will get it done, we're not doing our job. So I can't, I, I'm, I'm in total support of this, it's my district, okay? Um, but I'm not in support of approving this until all of these things are done. Abby started out her presentation by listing three things, three major things that haven't been completed yet. And if that's the case, they're still hanging out there for something to go wrong, for it to drag on until we can't figure out what to do or we're too far down the road and somebody's gotta say, oh yeah, well, let's go ahead and do this. Don't do this.
Well, for what it's worth, a, a contingent approval with no deadlines is at least potentially troublesome. And what we do in other contexts is we do deferred effective date approvals, which require things to be done by such and such a date. And if they're not completed to the city's satisfaction by that date, the approval, in this case of the SIP, is null and void. And I don't know why that wasn't done here, but I would recommend that that would be a way, you, you, you still have, uh, you still have the problem that, that, uh, Alder Teal has identified, that, that it, that this is your last kick at the cat, but at least you have some assurance that it doesn't go on indefinitely.
Yeah, but why do that? And I, I'm sorry Larry, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I disagree with you. Because it's our responsibility, sitting in front of this horseshoe facility, to say, yep, we agree to all the elements of whatever it happens to be, whether it's a development for a, um, two-unit apartment building or a great big commercial development such as this, it's our responsibility after everybody's looked at it and everybody that's responsible for the elements of it has says yes, it's okay, I agree with it. And if it's Gary Huth and somebody else, I don't remember the name, are still trying to figure out what to do for, for, uh, for stormwater, uh, that to me is not necessarily a, a project-ending event, but it's something that can be determined and solved right away without, by not approving of the project. You just simply say, well, we're not gonna do it tonight, then they gotta go back and they gotta get it done. And that's the only way I see anybody getting done with these things. Make sure that before you say yes, all of these things have taken place.
So Howard, are you, are you trying to make a motion to defer until all of these things are complete, as opposed to-
No, I'm gonna vote no.
Yeah.
I'm just pitching for vote, for voting no on this right now, and then I'll make a motion to defer it. And then that'll send it back for a couple of weeks, hopefully in a couple of weeks, all of these issues will be done and more of them haven't been surfacing, you know, that needed to be done. This is just a continuing sore spot.
But doesn't, Larry, does a motion to defer take priority over the main motion here?
Yes.
Alright, my motion is deferred.
I'll second that.
Okay, any-
Your motion is to defer until these items are completed by, by stormwater, by, by the engineering staff?
All of these, all of these issues that have popped up in Public Works and, and Plan Commission need to be resolved in writing and in agreement form, because if they don't, they're just a festering sore in the future.
Can I just say one quick thing? Abby's looking up the stormwater management minutes, because I think maybe last week on Water Resources, they did act on that. I just wanna say one thing, the planning, um, contingencies or, or conditions have all been addressed in their saying, yes, we will do it. Well, the way it works is, and the engineering ones as well, we won't sign off, there's like six or eight staff members that have to sign off on a project for them to get a, uh, building permit. We won't sign off on it until each one of those things are shown on the plan and we're pretty darn thorough about that. And so the engineering, uh, uh, comments are typically very technical in nature, but they're reviewed repeatedly and they're not signed off on until that plan has everything. And same with all the conditions that Abby read off from a planning perspective, we wouldn't sign off on a plan for a building permit until those are issued. Same with stormwater management, they don't get approval for a building permit till they've got a signed stormwater agreement. So I just wanted to mention that that's the way we've worked the process.
So Eileen, is that the normal process?
That's the normal process. Yeah, we spend a lot of staff time, a lot of the applicants' time, going over everything according to the approvals that were given. And it's, it's worked pretty well, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Sorry, um, I just looked up the minutes from the Water Resources Commission meeting from last week and I apologize, I was on vacation last week, so I'm still catching up on everything. Um, so there was a recommendation from Water Resources to approve the stormwater management plan as presented and to accept fees in lieu of onsite infiltration contingent on final review and approval by Dane County and city staff. So I think that's what hasn't happened yet, is the Dane County approval. And we can put it back on the next agenda.
Eileen?
I'm sorry, I just wanna say one more quick thing. The reason that we asked the Plan Commission to put those contingencies in is so they don't get lost. So they, you know, we wanna make sure that it's, for all time, people know this is the requirement. So that's why we ask them to do that, even though they've already said, yeah, they'll take care of it, we wanna make sure they know it. And it's usually dated, you know, um, for the comments made on this date, or they're included in the minutes.
Thank you, Eileen. Any questions or comments?
One further comment. Part of the TIA, we, um, identified that this development was not going to be a significant, um, detriment to the traffic, but that there were other, uh, recommendations that came out of that TIA that the city ought to consider. Um, I'm kinda curious as to what would happen to those recommendations? Do they go somewhere or do we put them on some kind of a plan or do we just ignore them?
John?
That's a good question. Uh, they're, they're not right now programmed into any planning or future capital budget. They're relatively long-term projections of things that may happen and recommendations for how we would address them if they do happen or when they do happen. So, so when somebody models something in a forecast twenty years from now or ten years from now, it could happen seven years from now or twenty-seven years from now and, and I don't know, uh, you know. So it, it's the kind of thing that I think historically we've tended to address these things when they're actual problems, but not so much proactively. I, I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer, uh, 'cause it, I, you know, it's difficult to put on a radar board that gee, in fifteen or twenty or twenty-seven years, we might have to do this, I, I don't know.
Better see the city be proactive and say that we have a list, which I hope somebody keeps, of things which we ought to be doing that have been recommended by a project, a TIA project, that we spent money on, that the citizens of the city of Middleton expect us to do a good job of. We should have that information available to us, so if in twenty-seven years, you and I are both retired, um, pull that piece of paper out and say, oh yeah, way back here in two thousand eighteen, we said we ought to do this and now look at us, we can't. It's one of these, catch if you can, you better do it now.
Yeah, right, and, and pulling against that, I think, becomes, you know, what's the present value of, of money? What else do we want to do that we actually have to do soon?
I don't know if there's things on there which in your opinion are important enough that they ought to be done now or in two years or five years?
It didn't strike me as emergent.
Right.
Okay, Joanna.
As a member of Public Works, I just wanna correct the record. First of all, the taxpayers do not pay for TIAs, the developer does. So we make sure that that's on the record. And Public Works did not make any recommendations for this TIA. So there is nothing from Public Works that we said has to be done because of this development. Is that not correct, Sean?
That's correct, we accepted the TIA with its recommendations, none of which were attributable to this development alone. Background traffic, mostly.
Okay, so that clears it.
But they should be done.
I, I, I think it's a good point, when do we do that stuff?
Thank you, Howard. Any other questions or comments, the motion is to defer. All those, yes, Mike?
I was just gonna mention one thing, you, you know, when do we do these things? Ideally, we would do it before the end of the TIP district, so the TIP dollars could help to pay for those improvements. So that, that is something that we should consider, is if there are necessary traffic improvements based on projections for traffic in two-three, let's get it going by twenty-twenty-five.
Can we also look at increasing the size of that storm sewer?
That also could be an eligible TIP cost.
So Sean, do you want to address that storm sewer issues or are you aware of, aware of it or is there anything which you can say about it now or the sizing of the storm sewer?
Exercise going back and forth.
Burn some calories whether I can or not. Um, I, I don't know a lot about the specifics. I know in general, that has been a problem area for flooding. Part of it is because it's very, very flat, part of it is because there's just not much elevation between the receiving channel and the upstream reach of where an inlet would have to be built. So you can't build a very big pipe, it would daylight out the, uh, asphalt. Uh, you, you can't build a very long pipe, because it has to have some pitch on it. Um, I don't know whether or not it's a, a ten-year-designed storm pipe, which is our standard, uh, or if it's something less than that. Um, but, but there are some problems in this whole area where we've had flooding in the past, uh, largely because it's such a flat area and there's just no way to build, uh, much head into the flow of a sewer.
Can't do much about the flat, Mike?
I just wanted to correct one thing, and that is by twenty-thirty-one, because this is a TIP five.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mike. I can't do a whole lot about the flat area, any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is to defer, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion to defer passes six to two. So the next one is recommendations and proposals, the first is the recommendation to expand the Public Arts Committee.
I'd move approval.
Second?
So-
Well, actually, this should be referred to LNO.
Okay, so is that the motion?
Yes.
How many are it currently and will it be a nod number?
I don't know, but this, that's what LNO would look at, so this should be referred to LNO.
Okay.
There are nine voting members currently.
Is this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is, is this a committee that's, numbers are dictated by ordinance, so that we'd have to change the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
And I, uh, we've had this conversation once before and, um, we start to get into trouble if we, uh, start, start changing the ordinances to, uh, to add or subtract people.
That's what the staff report says. Referral to LNO.
Yep, just making a comment.
Okay.
This is at the request of the committee.
Yeah, I had a question.
Yes, Mike.
So Rob made a comment during the Citizens Comment Period, that the reason for this request is to bring someone back who was booted off the committee. I just find that ironic, that, that a body, a, a committee body is asking for an additional person. How is this person gonna get selected? Is it gonna be by mayoral appointment? So aren't we back in the same place?
We're back in the same place.
So what's the point of doing this?
This, as I understand it, on the Arts Committee, this was a very critical member of the Arts Committee.
The first assumption is that the mayor's gonna reappoint this person. And if the mayor declined to, to reelect this person, what makes anybody think that the per, that the mayor's gonna reappoint this person?
I would hope the mayor would consider the Art Committee's request.
The mayor did not consider any committee's request previously.
What's the next step with the Golf Committee? Would you like to expand your committee, Golf Committee?
No.
Add one person back in to, you know, so.
Golf Committee is fine the way it is.
Okay, so the motion is to address it to LNO. Any other question or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes seven-one. So the next one is the recommendation for summer hours to become year-round hours for city field staff.
I'll move approval, recommended by personnel.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I, I'm just concerned that we make sure that we continue to monitor this, right? The, the whole idea of doing this was, was to kinda have a, a benefit for the, for the summer time period. And we need to be very careful that even though we have these shortened hours on Fridays, that we continue to provide the level of service that's required to meet the needs of the city, right? This isn't for the employees, what we need to make sure is that this, the, that the needs of the city come first and that we schedule employees to meet that need. And so if it works, that's great, but the moment that we start seeing that there's, things aren't getting done timely enough, we need to have another look at this and get it straightened out, so that the needs of the city come first.
So Mike, is there somewhere to monitor it?
Well, it's, yes, I, it's gonna be covered on Sean and, uh, Matt and, and me ultimately, to ensure that we do have enough people on staff, so that if we have an emergency and I run a Friday, that we can address it. So that requires us in terms of scheduling to make sure that we, um, we're, we're aware of how many people are available. Particularly, that's important during the wintertime, and as we've seen, it can also be very important during summer.
So there were some comments made that it, uh, improve the productivity, so I don't know if there was some data to support that. And then the second was morale, morale is easier to measure. So how would we, going forward, somehow prove or disprove one of these things?
The point is to be sure that city services are being maintained.
Right, right, and I think that's incumbent on us to monitor as well, as a committee.
Yes, Howard.
Wait, um, you or someone has the authority to, um, bring people in in case of a situation where we need additional staff for anything, is that correct?
That's true.
So, what's the problem?
If they're already gone for the weekend, it's hard to do.
Yeah, but, but if, but are they all gone? That's the problem.
So the question is, are you gonna have a call list or something then?
That's not the case. Not the case.
I, I defer Sean, that's, or Matt, for that matter.
For Sean.
Another trip, Sean, that's ten for tonight.
I'm gonna have to eat something when I get home. Right, so I, I think part of what we wanted to mon- monitor was, in the course of a week, what are we getting done? Uh, are, are we taking- Uh, are, are we taking five days of typical hours of work that we're all accustomed to here and still accomplishing them in four and a half days? Uh, and, and what Brad has seen out in the field is that we are. We're spending less time setting things up and taking things down, uh, by working longer days, by eliminating breaks in favor of lunch. So we're getting more, uh, you know, vehicle-on-the-road time, if you will. So, so from that perspective, yes, services are being met in a weekly, uh, course of events. I think one of our big concerns was, can we properly prep ballfields for weekend play on a Friday? Uh, 'cause one of the initial suggestions was, well, should we just go to four-ten's and skip Friday? But that wouldn't work.
It's not gonna fly.
Um, you know, sewer and water have some daily needs, things have to be attended to every day. Uh, so it wouldn't work to skip Fridays. But it did work to work half-day Fridays in this limited trial. I think it's an excellent point that going forward, we still have some feeling out to do as to, what does that mean in fall, what does that mean in winter? But part of what we ran into from a personnel perspective is for the folks that had to adjust their personal life schedule because of this, uh, this work-hour shift, especially with daycare, that bringing some certainty, reliability, and predictability to those hours would at least take some of the edge off of the frustrations that they've run into. And, and that, I think, was the genesis of, well, should we take what already has been working and, and been reasonably efficient and expand it to year-round predictable, consistent hours?
Well, you think it's, this is a good time to do it?
I think it's as good a time as any, and we're not the first city to, to do this. Other cities have done this year-round, uh, for a longer time, in fact, uh, Matt Amundson came from such a city. Uh, so he does already have experience with this.
So you don't see any issue during the winter then with the shortened daylight hours at all?
I'm not so sure that we do, uh, what we're doing is pretty much equipment-based then anyway. Uh, you know, so, so we're already running pretty routinely in winter, uh, in the dark.
That's a good point, though, I mean. So how about the snow days, that will be more or less similar?
Which, it, which day is it gonna snow, uh, you know, usually it's Sunday night.
That's what all schoolchildren hope it is.
Right, yeah, right. Uh, so Friday afternoon, I, you know, it's, it's a horse apiece. On that day, boy, it would've been handy if, if we weren't working half a day. But when it's on a Thursday, boy, it's handy that we're working nine hours anyhow that day. Uh, I think in the grand scheme of things, it'll all sort of be a wash.
Any other questions for Mike or Sean or anyone else?
I'm sorry, I heard something there, I just wanna make sure. If it snows on a Friday, you're still responsible for plowing the streets, and you can't say that half my crew is off.
No, we don't leave, I-
I get that.
We show up on Sunday night.
That's the kinda thing, that i, if it snows, if you have something that needs to get done, the excuse can't be that half my crew is off today.
No, we don't be, and that hasn't been a problem. So when we run into something that's unpredictable and unscheduled, uh, you'll find right down the line, there's no objection to staying on and getting the job done.
That, nothing like snowing is quite unpredictable.
We, we can program what we can program, and then we have days like this.
Okay, any other questions? Dane, Kathy, or any questions for Sean or? Mark, any more questions?
No, it's alright.
Okay.
I've made my point.
So, are we ready to vote? Howard, you got something? Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to go.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion to approve say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, the motion to adjourn.
I move.
Thank you.
Okay, second, so we are adjourned.